All right, I'm going to call us to order getting started just a couple of minutes late. So waiting on that gentleman who is caught in traffic to roll in, so Barry Hardwick, come on down. Not to put you on the spot there, Barry. First thing is always, I'm going to ask Commissioner Slattery to open us up in prayer.
May we pray. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening thankful for the many blessings bestowed upon each of us, looking to you for guidance in all that we do. We ask a special prayer for the family of Sheriff Rutherford Weatherford, and that you hold them in your comfort. We know this is a horrible time for them, and our community mourns the loss of the sheriff. We ask that you would be with us tonight, be with us as a community as we listen to one another, be with us as commissioners as we do our best to make the appropriate decisions that will be pleasing in your eyes and will be meaningful and valuable to our community. In Christ's holy name we pray. Amen?
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Slattery. Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Longmire?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Silkwood?
Here.
Slattery?
Here.
Coker?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is a public hearing. Just when y'all came in, I think most of y'all, if you were interested in speaking and got an opportunity to sign up on the signup sheet, is there anybody that wanted to speak? This public hearing is a request by AMHTN Development LLC to amend the Falcon Ridge final development plan in order to reduce average lot sizes, increase open space without increasing overall currently approved number of homes and lots. Is there anybody that intended to sign up for that public hearing that did not get an opportunity to do so? All right, I don't see any hands on that. We've got, it looks like 12 people, 11 people that have signed up for this. Everybody's going to be limited to five minutes each. Do a little quick math on that. If somebody, if you're able to get done more quickly than that, that's okay on that. And somebody says something that makes the points that you want to, and you want to defer your opportunity to speak, you don't have to speak just because you've signed up on this, so it's fine letting know on that. But with that, I believe our first speaker this evening is Tom Jones. If you would step up to the podium, and even though I've just said your name, Mr. Jones, if you'd introduce yourself again and give us your address, please.
I'm Tom Jones, I live at 828 New Shackle. And we start this journey into this subdivision in 2012, I believe we signed this contract. And I just want to be sure that the things that we signed up for in 2012 will be included in this new subdivision with American Homes. And so I have about three things on here I'd like to read. One is that the purchaser at his expense shall install a new asphalt paved driveway from the new road to the seller's garage. Another is that the sellers will have vehicular access to their home at all times. The purchaser shall work with the seller and White House Utility District to ensure that anything that has to be done with the sewer or the water, that they will take care of, and any relocation of the water or sewer lines, they'll take care of. Also, there was an understanding that our mailbox would be relocated from its present position, and purchaser agrees to relocate that, and they agreed to install lights along the driveway, which will be built, and if possible, to use our columns, but that may not be. And then that we would be not charged or not blamed if they have dynamite or problems there at the house. But when we signed this agreement, there was no Durham Farms, there was no traffic like there is now. And I don't have any problem with them putting in a subdivision, but I would like to have to think about, you guys think about that, when you have an additional 250 cars a day coming out of our road right there, which if any of you have ever driven past that, that's a lot of vehicles turning out of that road again. So for safety purposes, just please consider how they can best make this where we don't have wrecks and everything in front of our house, ever since they put up, I think, a yellow light at Drake's Creek. But they're still constantly have problems and wrecks down there. But we don't have any problem with this, and we just, we would like to have, you know, just the things that we agreed on taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next speaker that's signed up is Brittany Greenwood. It's Greenwood? We've got to go in that it's order on it. Do you just want to skip entirely? Okay, all right. Luke Whitaker? Okay. Carl and Sandra Huddleston? Is, okay. I wasn't trying to scare people off when I said this earlier, so. Bill Taylor mentioned he has a Zoom call at 7:30, but outside of that, so. John and Perinne Bates? Forgive me if I mispronounced a name.
My name is John Bates. I live at 794 New Shackle Island. We thought we were signing up for a drawing.
Oh, okay.
My wife signed it up, but the main, I came here realizing that this sounded like a slam dunk. But I guess I would like to have the information of why this is being done. And the other thing is, when you think about this, there's going to be much more open space. And 20 years from now, when I'll be dead, who is going to be taking care of that open space? What kind of assurances that this is being taken care of versus individuals who own all of the land as it would be, you know, divided in a regular area? So I guess there's not anybody here from the developer that would have the answers to those questions?
They likely would. The way we do this process, and I don't mean to take away from your time, but since you asked that question on that, is after the public hearing's closed, we'll go to that as an agenda item, we'll have a representative from the developer come up and speak after staff speaks on that, and that gives us the opportunity to ask questions then. But your questions help inform our questions on that, so. But again, I didn't mean to cut you off if you weren't finished on that, so, okay. See, next up, it looks like we have Sarah Ezell.
If you don't mind, I also have a question for clarification. Is this property that is zoned currently, is it for single home ownership, or is it for rent homes?
That's a question we can flush out in our discussion. We can't go back and forth right now, but that's, you can ask that question rhetorically and use that for, to get our conversation on that. But ma'am, if you would, I know, mention your name. Would you say your name and address, please?
I'm Sarah Elizer Ezell. I live at 787 New Shackle Island Road. My property is between the development and Hendersonville. We own a farm there. We, like I, rule life. It's been in the family several generations. We're concerned if this is made rental property, what it is going to do to the area that we now call our peaceful homes. As you know, rental property, even one or two locations together, is not always a good choice. 103, I cannot see anything but trouble for the city as well as ourselves. I'm also concerned about the traffic. Traffic on New Shackle Island Road is horrible. We have heard for the last 30 years, the state is going to do something. The state hasn't done anything. It's my understanding it's not even in the planning for the next few years. The traffic out there is just really bad, and this many additional automobiles on it will not help. Your map up here is kind of misleading as to the location where this entrance is coming out. It kind of implies that it is a straighter area than what it is. Really, gentlemen and ladies, that is on a curve. Visibility will be bad. I noticed that there is going to be a turn lane put in. I can't see that really benefiting a whole lot, and a regress lane going towards Shackle Island, which, there's a regress lane by my driveway, and I can tell you what happens. I start to turn left, and they zoom around that, and one of these days, there's going to be an accident there. I just think that this is terrible. It will increase our students in our schools, which is not a good thing either. And also, in that area have been Indian mounds with Indian graves and artifacts, and the developer should be aware that he may be digging into areas that should not be dug into, and I do not know if the city is aware of that. But personally, my family and I, and the neighbors, think this is a bad development for that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Ezell. We're trying to induce penmanship. We think we have Robin Michelle Kramer.
I signed along. She, sorry.
Okay, did you intend to speak at just the regular public hearing, or the, a regular citizen? Okay, okay, all right, that's. Next up, we have Jim Waters. And I think you know how this process works, yes?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Jim Waters, 244 Southburn Drive. I could answer some of these questions we've already heard, but I know that's not the order, but I may.
It's your five minutes, Alderman Waters, so you can do whatever you want to.
Do what?
It's your five minutes, so you can do whatever you want to on that.
It's my war, too.
It is.
Okay, let me get kind of serious here and start by saying this location that's before us tonight has come a long ways since 2006. Right, Keith? It's come a long ways. And that was before I got into politics. I say a long ways because, at that time, it showed only 88 lots. Now it's all changed. Just look what this developer is now asking this community to face. It's not 88 lots anymore. It's now 103. Also, it's changed to smaller lots, smaller homes. It would be just another high-density rental apartment project. You can't get around it. Voluntary impact fee, has this been discussed with the developer? And you don't have to answer that because we don't have a mandatory impact fee. I realize that. But I've read through anything in the brochures that we received, impact fee right now is volunteer. And hopefully, this board and the planning department will come up with the mandatory impact fee in the very near future. We need it badly. Excuse me. When I look at some of the development that's going on in today's different locations, different developers, I see volunteer impact fee coming in to this city, volunteer. So down the road, this developer is no better than these other people. They need to volunteer the impact fee, but I'll leave it up to you guys. The traffic situation on New Shackle Road is extremely heavy. I know, I live there. I notice on page, this is CSDG, you probably got a copy, number two, about a traffic study from the Public Works Director. Have we received a traffic study yet? It goes on to say that be required by the site plan review, so I don't know whether you have it yet or not. That's a question you might want to answer later, too. I've been asked over the last couple of weeks, several questions. Will New Shackle Island be widened at all? And I know it's a TDOT project, New Shackle Island, I know that's out of our control. But something that's got to be done if this ever materialized. I think we all know that. This may be rental units, especially on this heavy travel road, to me is mind-boggling. I tell you, I can just imagine going down New Shackle with all these cars coming out of these rental units. I may be wrong, but I only saw one entrance and one exit on the diagram. If I'm wrong, I apologize, but that's all I could see, one, one. Again, I say, Mr. Chairman, that this developer's come a long ways since 2006. And Mr. Chairman and the committee, I cannot support this. I do not and will not support this. I ask strongly, and I encourage you, to deny this request before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Waters. Dr. Taylor?
I'm a little shocked I agree with Alderman Waters.
He's a good job, thank you.
I'm Bill Taylor. I live at 200 Oak Hill Court, which is across the street from Falcon Ridge Development. Oak Hill Court is a one-lane road that has five homes on it. We all have 7 to 15 to 25 acre lots. Falcon Crest has been developed a long time ago. It was approved in 2006, as you know, with 88 lots. Then it went to 96 lots in 2007, and 103 lots in 2014. Nothing we can do to change what's approved. They have the right to do what they want to with 103 lots. They have a right to do, from what I understand, with rental houses. I don't like either one of those, but you have the right to dictate how these homes or how these homes look. At one time, they wanted a minimum of 12,000 square foot lots, which is a quarter acre lots. Now they want to go down to almost a tenth of an acre lot, and, which is a 50% decrease in size, from 12,000 to 6,000. It's pretty significant. I served on Planning Commission for this county for four years, and we turned down anything that looked like this, we turned it down in the county. Now, I don't know what the city wants to do, but county said, "We're not doing that. That's just, that's just too tense, high dense." And the county's gotten even more strict since I've not been a county commissioner. Across the street from the Falcon Ridge, the Hackett property, they tried, in 2020, they tried to develop something similar, using a lot of green space to make it look nice, and hiking trails and paths, but what they really did was put a high-density homes per square foot. But a tenth of a lot, a tenth of an acre lot is not even considered by the county, and I don't think the city should do it either. You have a right to dictate how these, if they're rental units, you can dictate how they are, and how they, how they look, and how they're positioned, but you cannot allow them to be, look like Section 8 homes. We can't, that would not be a thing for Hendersonville to have. We also emphasize, in the Planning Commission and the county, we also emphasize no on-street parking. If you know the development, Bridge Mill on Saundersville Road, they have cars on both sides of the road, and if there's a fire in the back, they're not going to get, there's a safety issue, too, of emergency vehicles. That I don't think is addressed very well in this plan. It's obvious the reduction in size of the lots is for economic gain. It's harder to build, it's easier to build on flat lots than on hills. The infrastructure's easier, less cost for them, more profit for them. I don't think you need to use, allow a company to profit at the expense of Hendersonville citizens. So my plea for y'all is twofold. One, to reject, reject what American Homes wants to do. If I prostituted the land, let's not further prostitute it. And more importantly, though, and I think what's a precedent that y'all are considering is, what's the next development going to be? Are you going to make it smaller lots? I mean, right now, they're tiny, and make it even smaller, or make that a precedent that you'll have to agree to later on. So I ask you to vote no for these changes, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Eddie Roberson, and I live at 1049 Smoke Rise Lane. And I'm one of the aldermen, I'm the junior alderman in Ward 6, and I want to echo what my colleague, Mr. Waters, Vice Mayor Waters, has said, such a good, concise capture of the issue. I want to tell you some of the problems that I have with this plan. And I'm not going to tell you that you should deny it, but I'm going to tell you, when I deliberate it, if you approve it, when it comes before me, these are some of the issues that I am going to have to have answers to. First of all, it's been stated several times that this plan has changed more than the weather. You know, in 2006, 88 lots; in 2007, 96 lots; in 2014, 103 lots. And now they're coming to us with the same number of lots, but higher density. Now, it could, it's going to be argued, I would think, by the applicant, that it's not less density because of the more open space. But I would have you, if you could look at this development from a distance, and you see the number of homes per lot, you would say it's definitely more high dense. It's a much higher density property. Now, I wasn't on BOMA any of these times before this plan was deliberated and decided. I understand that we can't eliminate this plan, that we have to go with the existing plan that was approved in 2014. But I agree with Dr. Taylor that we don't have to give more. I think we've given enough. And some of the issues that I raised, let me just tick them off with the remaining time I have. First of all, the plan that is now in place has for 103 lots, and the requirement that 90 to 100% of the exterior be brick or stone. And that is being changed with this plan. It also requires the homes to be between 200 and, or 2,200 and 2,500 square feet per home, and it is reduced. And also, 60% of the properties have side-loaded garages. All of those parameters that the board in 2014 gave once again a concession to the developer, they're wanting the rules of the game changed one last time. So I am concerned about the reduced lot sizes, as had been mentioned. I think my, according to my calculation, they're going to put over six homes per acre, per buildable acre of their plant. That's too much. So reduced lot sizes, two, they have eliminated side-loaded garages. Number three, they have less stone and brick construction, so less durable construction. Number four, as Mr. Waters stated, there's only one entrance and exit, even though they're going to put sprinklers. I still have a concern that there's just one way in and out. And then I'm concerned about the emergency access. And the last thing is, there's been no offer of voluntary impact fees, and also, there are smaller homes on smaller lots. So in my mind, I have great problems with this, and I look forward to your deliberations and your questions regarding this important matter in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ralph and Elaine Lynn? That was the last, that was the last individual that signed up for our public hearing here. Is there anybody that's come in since then? I'm sorry?
You'd like to speak?
Yes, sir. Well, if you would, yes, sir. Mr. Elizer, if you would, I know your wife just spoke, but if you would say your name and give your address again, please, sir.
Yes, my name is Johnny Elizer. I live at 789 New Shackle Island Road. I have been living here for 65 years at this particular place, and before then, I lived there on a foreign place. We own approximately 80 acres there. I have been working crops there, farming, doing tobacco and this, that, and the other, and I have picked up several artifacts of Indians around the area. I don't know if y'all are aware or not, but just one farm over is the largest burial ground of Sumner County. If you move one farm down from that, y'all trying to develop all this. I have a sack full of Indian artifacts that I found on this property. So if y'all care to look, here they might be. This is part of a burial bowl. They bury one of these, well, most every Indian is very important to the tribe. This is for them to carry their food on to the promised land. When they bury them, they will bury them with this bowl where they can carry food on to the promised land with it. And I would not find all these artifacts if it's not Indians there. I do not know of a burial ground there, but I do know of one, one farm over. And I also have a picture of it right here in this book, if anybody's interested. There it been, ladies and gentlemen. If y'all want to see closer, I'll pass the book to you.
It'd be fine, if you want to start down here.
Now, every once in a while, I have to come in and out with a load of hay. I like to get my cattle off at least twice a year, take them to the market. I can sit there 10 minutes sometime trying to get out with a load of hay or my cattle on New Shackle Island Road, on kind of traffic. It's going to be a wreck there. Sometimes I sit there in my house, in my front yard, I hear an ambulance coming. From Harrisonville, it's going up Shackle Island area. Well, you'll hear him stop down there at the stop 70, stop 30. You hear him have to stop again before he gets to my house. The traffic's so bad, the fire engines and the amulets cannot get up there to beach or Shackle Island area without being delayed quite a bit on all the traffic. Anyway, I'd like for y'all to think about all of this, and I vote no, and I hope y'all consider the same. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, Mrs. Ezell. That's dawned on me, I believe I referred to you as Mr. Elizer a moment ago, I apologize for that. So I believe I referred to you as Mr. Elizer a moment ago, and I'm sorry, I misspoke on it. That is everybody that has signed up for the public hearing. Was there anybody that's come in since then that would like the opportunity to speak that did not sign up? Saw your hand first.
Hi, I'm Anne Elizer Ford. I live at 110 Kimber Lane. I'm straight across from Drake's Creek Road. This development is right across the road from me also. I'm right there where a lot of the wrecks occur. This entrance is coming out, right in the curve, where there will be additional wrecks. We also, we have the traffic problem, the rental problem. There's also, as my brother just stated, when there's accidents and stuff, which we have quite a lot of them, I can hear the accidents happen with me inside my house, watching TV with the doors shut and the air conditioning running, we can hear the impact. When there is an accident, the ambulance rescue people cannot even get through to get to them. There is no way on Shackle Island Road that you can get anywhere. Actually, the police department have told us, they will not even pull people over on Shackle Island Road because it is not safe for them to pull anybody over. That's a very sad thing. Actually, there was an accident one night at the end of our drive where one of the ambulance people were hit working an accident on Shackle Island Road. where one of the ambulance people were hit working an accident on Shackle Long Road. We have been promised a red light at the end of our road, which has not happened yet. But I don't know that that will even help with any of the problem or the situation. As numerous people have already said tonight, this is a very, very bad plan at this time until some of these other issues have been addressed. And we wish that you would please consider that you need to put the horse before the cart instead of the cart before the horse. And we would appreciate you taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it saw one other hand. Yes, sir. There's another, thank you.
My name is Ken Duke. I live at 907 New Shackle Island Road. Have lived there since 1996. My understanding is, at that intersection of New Shackle Island and Drake's Creek, $2.5 million has been set aside, $2 million by the county, $500,000 by the city of Hendersonville, even though it's not in the city limits, because of accidents. And they've come by two different times to mark different places that they're going to expand it, and they haven't done anything to it. There've been cars that have been flipped upside down in my neighbor's yard, wrecks that they were talking about. It's just, nobody's put a turn lane there. If you look at this particular one, if you're heading north, you're coming downhill around a curve. If you're heading south, you're coming around a curve and up the hill. There needs to be a completely new lane in there if you're going to do that. There has to be a turn lane. If you go back to New Shackle Island and Drake's Creek, there's supposed to be a turn lane there, and it's going to take part of my property, part of my front yard. But I'm glad to do that because this school's starting back up. Guess what? I'll sit there and all of a sudden, bam, wrecks, wrecks. And once every two weeks, there's a wreck there. It's just a matter of time. No one's been killed, thank God, but there's been some people that have been pretty close. And like I said, there was one o'clock in the morning, car loses control, winds up upside down in my neighbor's yard. And it's just a matter of time. And if we put that, if we put that subdivision right there, if you go up and down that road, you're going up a hill, around a curve, you're going down the curve, you're limited sight. There needs to be a completely, a complete lane put in there, and I don't see where the place, the space is. I know in other subdivisions, up and down, they put a turn lane over on the side or something like that. But if they, if you don't expand this road, and I've lived there since 96, and firstly, there were deer that were causing the wrecks, now it's just people. And now the, with school starting back up and everything, it's just a matter of time. And the sight line on that particular part of the road, it's just an accident waiting to happen. It's not if it happens, it's when it happens, and how many is going to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. I believe there's one more. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Cody Rothwell. I live at 150 Oak Hill Court, back with Dr. Taylor.
Sir, can you spell your last name for us?
R-O-T-H-W-E-L. I didn't know that this development was back up on the board. I thought it was a continuation of Durham Farms. I'm a twenty-six-year contractor and developer here in Middle Tennessee. The egress on this development is horrific. I have a seventeen-year-old little girl. Everything in life that drives up and down this road. We just recently had a car accident with the Isaacs family. Becky Isaacs, right here at the base of the hill of our property address. There really needs to be some consideration on the ingress and egress to this development because it is not safe. To the gentleman before me's point, there's going to be continuous accidents. There's going to be fatalities if something's not done differently to gain access to this development. On another note, I've spent seventeen years in the hedge fund industry, and I will tell you this. I've dealt with Blackstone Capital, Invitation Homes, American Homes for Rent, all across the United States in forty-two states. If this board gives them an inch, they will take a mile. That's all I can say.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. Oh, I'm sorry, Caitlin has a few items that she wanted to, some emails and some calls that I believe the planning department has received.
So we do, all the planning commissioners did receive a letter from Beth, and I don't want to mispronounce the name. It's, I'm going to spell it.
Wettingale.
Wetting, thank you.
You're welcome.
And it was presented to all the planning commissioners tonight in front of them. The other one is an email that we received, and we also received a video that was made available to the planning commissioners with their packet on Friday by, from Mr. Ron. And I'm, again, I'm going to spell the last name, M-A-F-F-E-I.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to officially declare a public hearing closed, just for folks in the audience to let you know what we do next. We always have our public hearings at the beginning of this. We've got a couple other agenda items that we'll get to first, and then we'll come up with a discussion on this, just to let you kind of know the order. But next up on our agenda is just our regular monthly, monthly, or regular monthly public comments. I do not believe anybody's signed up for that, so with that, I'm going to declare that public hearing closed. And then the next item on our agenda is an acceptance of the agenda as presented tonight. And so I will entertain a motion from someone.
So move.
Oh, that was, I'm going to give that to Commissioner Martin, and then a second from Commissioner Slatter. And see, all in favor, signify please by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. That motion carries. And next item up is approval of our minutes from our July second meeting. And I will entertain a motion. We have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. That carries. And then next up on our agenda items is Item Seven, Development Plans. And this is when we'll get into, we've got one tonight, and it's the discussion of Falcon Ridge on that. So Grant, I believe that this is, you worked with folks on this. So Grant, I'm going to have you lead off, and if we have a representative from the developer, if y'all would go on and step up to the podium now, after Grant gets the opportunity to, go on, step up now, if you would, please. And if it gets too long, you're welcome to sit down, but I would just kind of like to have you there. But Grant will kind of give an introduction of everything, and then we'll recognize you and have you the opportunity to speak as well on that. So, Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as referenced earlier, there were a few iterations of this development that were approved previously in the late 2000s. The existing Falcon Ridge Final Development Plan was approved in 2014 with one hundred and three lots. This is located on New Shackle Road, south of the intersection of Drake's Creek Road. I believe most folks are familiar with that area here. And applicant has submitted requirement, has submitted the request for the Final Development Plan Amendment, also for a hundred and three lots with layout and lot size changes. Some of these changes include the smaller lot widths and sizes, more fifties and sixty-five-foot width lots, and six. This would remove thirty-two of the ninety-foot lots and six of the hundred-and-twenty-five-foot lots. The lot size is reduced, reduced to six thousand square feet from the minimum of sixty-four, six thousand four hundred and ninety feet, square feet from the existing plan. There are a few of, a couple of ten thousand square foot lots in the proposed plan and a twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy square foot lot. This also, as referenced earlier, would call for the removal of the side-load garage requirement for the sixty percent of the homes to be side-loaded. With the lot width change, it does, it makes it impractical to, impossible to have side-load garages with those lot widths. Some of the changes, some of the things that could be beneficial to this include, if you look on the, I think there's a slide that shows the hillside along New Shackle there. We did ask for them to provide this to us to kind of see what the view shed on that area would be from the road. Did eliminate that row of houses there along the road, the hundred-and-twenty-five width lots. Those are six of those. And one of the other things on that, those six lots currently are shown with connections to New Shackle Road. That would be eliminated with this plan change. And the open space has been increased from sixteen-point-four-two acres to twenty-nine-point-two-one acres. I think in looking at this, this, I guess one other thing is neighboring properties would back up the open space instead of the backyards. And while the lots are more compact, there's significantly more open space around the perimeter of the development, which is adjacent to neighbors. And I think looking at this, one of the things to look at on this would be, there is some character change based on these two development plans. And that's, that would be the thing to really kind of consider whether or not the changes are beneficial enough to the character of the changes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Grant. And same thing, will you state your name, your address, who you represent?
Name's James Martin. I work with AMH. And I, 1657 Murfreesboro Pike, Nashville, Tennessee, 37217. Thank you, Chairman, and Planning Commission members and planning staff. Y'all have been great to work with. Appreciate your opportunity tonight. My name's James Martin, and I'm here along with two folks, Billy Waits and Matt Dunn. They work with me at AMH. And also tonight, we have Ryan Lovelace, who is with CSDG. They're an engineering and land planning firm that helped put this together. Billy and Matt are part of the local team here in Nashville dedicated to developing high-quality communities and homes in the greater Nashville area. To date, AMH has developed about sixteen communities within the greater Nashville area that are over, represents over nine hundred homes. And that's since 2018, 2019. Our smallest community's twenty-three homes. Our largest community's two hundred and seven homes. So if you average that out, that's, you know, fifty, sixty homes. But we have experience in both small and larger and highly amenitized and the like Falcon Ridge here with the trails and the open space that we have. You know, I want Ryan Lovelace to come up and present a little bit more of the details that I think are very, very important on the reason. These are smaller lots on average than what we have. They are. If you look at the benefit of the view shed, and I think that exhibit that Grant put up and requested, and I'm glad you did that, says a lot. If you overlay, then you look at the view shed off of New Shackle Island right there. And then you look, go back to the plan. If you look at the amount of buffering off of all the neighboring properties, including New Shackle Island, that was not there before. And in the current approved plan, all of the lots butted up against neighboring properties. This gives you a buffer around the entire perimeter. And that's the benefit of clustering this in and having the smaller lots. It's less road frontage that the town has to maintain and pay for, for maintenance. You're not the utility provider, but it's less utility maintenance because it's less linear footage of water and sewer lines as well. The entrance down there, we do have a turn lane that'll be required. And there is, the site distance has been approved from our current plans through T-DOT. That's all we can really go by. There's been requests on if T-DOT allows it to put in a raised median there instead of just striped turn lanes, to do a raised median there for safety. If T-DOT allows it, we're fine with that. We want to be good neighbors. You know, a little bit about our residents. In our communities, we own all the homes. They're single-family homes. They are subdivided. It is not on one big parcel like an apartment would be. They are on individual lots. This house sizes, we range three, four, five-bedroom homes. The square footage on the homes that we propose here go from nineteen-hundred up to twenty-four-hundred square feet. And we have a community in Hendersonville now. We're doing fifty-four homes in Fountain Brook. And if you look at the lease amounts there, they range from twenty-seven-hundred up to thirty-two-hundred dollars per month. Household income for that, you're over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to be able to qualify for that. You know, we screen our residents. We maintain the outside of the homes. We maintain the landscaping on every home. We have a contractor that does that. So we stand behind and we're proud of the homes that we build. We're proud of the housing that we provide. Rental homes aren't for everyone. I don't live in a rental home myself. But it is a good housing option for a lot of folks, either through need or through desire. But I'll be here for questions. I would like Ryan to come up and touch on a few more points.
Good evening. Ryan Lovelace, CSDG. You know.
Can you give your address, please?
I'm sorry.
And then business address, foundation, who you're representing?
2305 Klein Avenue, Nashville. I was about to give our address from ten years ago. I don't know where that came from. So, you know, like James said, we've been working with staff here for quite a few months and been great to work with them. And, you know, kind of give and take as we go back and forth on this plan to get it to this level here. And, you know, nobody likes change. I understand that. You know, we have a current plan. It's an approved plan, and full construction plans are approved. T-DOT permits are approved. And frankly, we started work a little bit already, last year, year before. So we've come a long ways on this, and we're not asking for any more homes here. The access point at the top on New Shackle is the same access point we had before. There's no changes to our approved plans on that. The part that we're changing is interior. If you go back to that one sheet that showed the view shed coming off New Shackle, which is the bottom left side of the plan, if you look at the plan, it's a football field. From New Shackle to that first home, that's a football field. And that's, that's a big difference from what we had before. Before, you'd seen six homes and probably the back of some others. So it's, the view shed stays. Also, like James had said, you know, our buffers were like ten-foot before around the perimeter. We're at a hundred-plus around the perimeter now. So a lot more buffer. You know, and I think a big thing that's a benefit to having smaller lots here is this is about a miles less of road. And eventually, the city has to maintain that. You know, forty, fifty years from now, these are city roads. So having a miles left of maintenance for the same number of homes, that's a savings for the city, for the lifetime of a subdivision. And also, we have pulled off Drake's Creek quite a bit just to stay out of that floodplain a little bit more on those lots that are on the far right of the page. So again, I think these changes are good. I think these changes are a benefit for the view shed out there and the future of the city. And just here to answer any questions y'all might have and ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
Sir, James, did you have another, anybody else that you wanted to speak from your end for?
No, sir.
With that, I'm going to open it up to questions, comments from commissioners. And I don't normally do this, but I'm actually just going to ask one question myself on this. Y'all talked about the view shed and just that sort of thing. Was there any consideration of ever just putting in less lots and using the same footprint that you're proposing right now?
You know, in every deal, there requires an amount to make the deal worthwhile, to make it pencil out and make it financially viable. If you put that amount of road in and take away lots, you know, that's going to be less revenue for us, I mean, just to put it bluntly. And that's important. I mean, we do have a business to run, and it's got to work out for that. But yeah, we, you know, that's why we didn't want to request more than a hundred and three was currently approved. But sticking with the hundred and three is where we wanted to be.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So thank you for being here tonight. As many of us know, a lot has changed in Hendersonville since this plan was last approved in 2014. Namely, something we've heard tonight a lot about is traffic and how dangerous that area of New Shackle Island can be. Has there been any discussion between you all and the staff about putting together a traffic study?
You know, did we have a traffic study? We did before, right. I don't know if that's been updated.
So ten-year-old traffic study, but you did do one in 2014?
I don't know.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Okay, so my question would be, and I guess it would be more of a statement. I think that we would need a more recent traffic study because conditions have changed, not only in Hendersonville, but in the surrounding area to the point where, you know, if the entrance remains where it is, it's on a curve, it's on a hill. You're looking at all that egress and ingress of traffic in and out. You know, I'm no traffic study expert, but I think it, I mean, you're offering turning lanes, but I think at minimum, you would need a stoplight to really control that traffic.
Yeah, I don't mind. If we have to do another traffic study, we can as part of our, because if this is, if this change is approved, we would have to go back and redo our construction drawings for this plan, not the current plan that's approved. And submitting a new traffic study for that, I don't know, is it T-DOT road? I'm not sure if they would want a stoplight that close to the next big intersection. I don't know. Typically, they don't. Typically, they don't, in my experience, they want to keep traffic flowing, but flowing safely.
Correct.
Your point, your point is well taken.
Yeah. I think that's something we would need to know before this would move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trey, I believe you can speak to that, can't you, Ms.?
I sure can. So we are going to require a traffic impact study. That was one of our very first comments on this FDP. That traffic impact study will come with recommended improvements, and those improvements have to be approved along with the construction plans so they can be shown on the construction plans. So that, that traffic impact study will consider trips generated, side distance, all, all those different things.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I have several questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Of the nine hundred-plus homes in the greater Nashville area, what is the smallest lot size?
It's probably the fifth, the six thousand square, the, the, what's the smallest lot size we have?
Six thousand.
Six thousand square foot.
These, okay.
We do have in Davin, excuse me, in Davenport Downs, we do have a couple that are alley-loaded that are smaller. I think originally on this plan, some of the alleys, Grant, were smaller than six thousand square feet on the, on the current approved plan. So we're actually, you know, not going, the minimum slot size is actually higher than what it was. The average of the total is less. I want to make that clear.
Yes.
But we, our, our smallest lot size here is larger than our pre, our currently approved smallest lot size here. But we have in Davenport Downs, we have an alley-loaded product that is on a smaller lot than, than these. Just to answer your question.
And you've eliminated all of the alley-loaded?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was trying to write furiously as you were sharing some numbers. You said in the current plan that you have before us, monthly rent between twenty-two and thirty-two hundred dollars is your assumption?
In, in a neighboring community in Fountainbrook in Hendersonville?
Okay.
It's twenty-seven hundred to thirty-two hundred monthly rent.
Okay. And you are estimating an annual income of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a family per year?
Household income, at least, yes.
Household income, to be able... So I'm, I'm curious...
That's what our average is across the nation?
Sure, sure, sure. And we have to have something as a starting point for a conversation. I'm not going to hold you to the penny. But in this comparison, that's in our packet, and I think this is one of the slides that shows the orig, that, yes, thank you. These were the original design guidance that were provided. And then the next slide shows what you're looking at now. And I think the next slide shows even the smaller properties. That's okay, we get the general idea, Caitlin. Thank you. If we go, thank you, there we go. If we go back to those that were part of the twenty fourteen approved plan, if we could go back, take a stab, and I'm not going to hold you to the penny, what would these houses bring in in terms of an assumed average monthly rent?
I, I don't know. I don't know what the sizes of these homes are. They're black and white sketches. We had, from this approval, we had already worked with staff to come up with different house plans...
Sure.
For the current plan, so that weren't, they weren't going to be these. They were in the same vein. We've kept, and I believe, Grant, you'll have to correct me, but i- if you go back to the comparison slide, if you will? The...
No.
That one, towards the bottom, the exterior materials, they're, they're the same. But I believe there was a request, Grant, if I'm not mistaken, that we changed that to, instead of sixty percent being seventy-five percent brick, to do fifty percent all brick. And then the other fifty percent not requiring all brick. So it's actually, just getting out of the whole seventy-five percent, we're fine either way. If we want to keep it like this, we're okay. If we want to change it to half of them being all brick, that's okay, too.
Okay.
We're building some of this product right now in a community we just started, and it's, they are all brick. It's in Mount Juliet. So we, we already had the renderings there.
Okay. Thank you. And I think, my last question, and then I have a statement to my fellow commissioners. So there's a seventy-seven percent increase in green space. Am I doing that math correctly?
It's now sixty percent of the total site is common open space.
Okay.
Compared to, the acreage is sixteen point four-two. Total acreage of the site's fifty-five acres, if I'm not mistaken. So thirty percent up to sixty percent. So we doubled the open space. And a lot of that's by moving everything tighter in. It gets it off the flood plain in the back, gives you the buffers off the property.
Which is a concern.
Yes.
The flood plain is a concern. And I'm just curious about the amenities, and I know this is just putting a couple of data points in the, the, the comparison that we're looking at. But playground equipment and trail in twenty fourteen, playground equipment and less trail in twenty twenty-four. So are we losing amenities for the community?
You know, that, that is accurate, that there's less linear footage of trail. But we pulled the trail a little bit further off of Drake's Creek compared to the old. If, if we needed to match the linear footage of the old plan, we can do that. I mean, it'd just be, instead of it being a little wider, going towards Drake, Drake Creek, we could make it a little curvier.
Waveier.
Yes. And make, keep the linear footage the same. So I, I did, you know, some of the comments that I'd heard, you know, previously from, in the public hearing comment, you know, about the square footage, you can see the previous minimum square footage was twelve hundred square feet. We're at nineteen hundred. You know, the, the, the largest lots had a minimum square footage of twenty-four hundred. And we're, we're just saying nineteen hundred square foot. But they're nineteen hundred square feet, and they go up to twenty-four, almost twenty-five hundred square feet. So the minimum is higher than what it was. And then the, the amount of brick and all, it's the same, it's the same comment, what we're proposing on the new plan as well. So it's, it's consistent.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So finally, I'll end with just a comment. We spent a great deal of time as a commission, listening to public input when we were talking about the Westlake District Plan. And we worked very hard to back off of the high density that was in the currently approved zoning and trying to reduce that zoning. And this feels to me like we're starting already to move right back up. I, unfortunately, I am not in favor of six thousand square foot lots. Those are very tiny lots. That is very dense development at a time that we did work so hard to start to reverse earlier trends and reduce the density that we see. And that concerns me.
I understand.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Slattery. Commissioner Martin?
Good evening. Thank you for, for bringing us this project.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to, I really liked what my fellow alderman said, Alderman Waters and Alderson Robertson. And I wanted to kind of come back to negotiated fees. And to, I, I guess, going back to your original application, did you guys pay any impact fees or impact-related fees?
No, sir. No, sir. But we've talked about that. And, you know, it is not, I'm, I gotta be careful, but I'm, I'm not against impact fees, right? Because it, depending on what it goes towards. I know that Grant had mentioned, hey, what, what, what connection or what, you know, this is the only piece of Hendersonville across Drake's Creek, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Keith, is that right? So, you know, right across you have the, the park, the rugby field park. And so we started thinking, you know, do we make a connection there, you know, across the creek? Well, that really only benefits these folks. It doesn't really benefit most of Hendersonville, which is on the other side of Drake's Creek. So what could we do? We met with Andy Gilli, your park director, and said, you know, what, what is the next thing that you would want to have in your wish list at the rugby park? And he said, pave this parking lot. You know? He thinks it would be about a hundred thousand dollars. So what we would like to say is we would contribute a thousand dollars a home for that park, whether it's for paving, playground, whatever, doesn't matter. You know, that'd be up to the town to decide. But we're, we're for that. We're okay with that. That will benefit, it'll take our community and benefit and make it and improve a part that our community could also be a part of and enjoy. You know, right now, it's a gravel parking lot. It gets heavily used for flag football and for rugby, and they just put the lights in, which is a great addition. I think paving that, according to Andy, that was something that was tops on his list as well. I think, Keith, you had mentioned at one time, there's another part of the park that might need some access to it. Maybe that hundred and three thousand dollars goes towards that. I, I don't know. But we wanted to meet with the park director and say, what is your, what's your wish list, you know, for this park? Because I think that would benefit more of Hendersonville than just a path crossing from our piece to the park piece.
Okay. And I wondered, there was an email from a citizen that was saying that there was a flood study done, and Billy Waits was showing it around in a legal document, trying to get them to sign it.
In a legal document?
Yeah.
A, a legal document or?
A legal document.
Legal doc, okay.
Yeah.
I heard, sorry. I heard illegal document. Like, Billy, what'd you do?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Can you talk about the flood plain issue a little bit?
Sure.
And some of the concerns with, that the community has?
And I think we've addressed that. So anytime you, FEMA, everybody's heard of FEMA, they have, they put out flood maps. And Trey, you may have to jump in and help me with this. But they put out flood maps, flood areas, flood zones along the creek. So it's not just the creek bank, but it's outside of that as well. If you place fill, dirt into an impact, a FEMA flood zone, you have to get a certified letter of map revision. You got to revise the FEMA map. Am I okay so far?
Yes, sir.
All right, good. So it's called a CLOMAR. When we started this project, the approved plan showed us needing a CLOMAR. Part of that is they measure the amount of rise in the creek by tenths of a foot. I mean, it can be very miniscule. What we've done to address that, in that cul-de-sac where the playground is, that whole street going north and south, we've pulled west, and we've eliminated those lots in the corner. That's where some of the impacted fill. And it, again, we're talking minutia amounts of fill in this, but it matters to FEMA in these flood maps. So we think we've addressed that, so we won't need, we did go to them to say, hey, would you sign this? Because it would represent a slight rise in a potential flooding incident on your property. And he said, I'm not comfortable with that. So it's like, okay. So what do we do with the plan? So that, this also helps address that as well by bringing things more clustered internally in the community.
Okay. And then my last question is, there's a lot of talk about the history. I, I think this goes back to the last Mayor Foster. But how come you waited so long to build?
This, the, the plans, this is a very expensive property to develop. You know, the way it was laid out, the different product types for only a hundred lots, right? There was a number of different, there was four or five different lot sizes for a hundred lots. That's a decent, that's a, that's a big amount for a hundred lots. I think that was it. I think the, the architectural drawings, back to your point, I think that, I don't know anybody that would have built that here. So we had to work with staff to change that already, which we've done. So I think the, the plans that we're now submitting are more in line with what staff had previously approved last year. That weren't, you know, those twenty fourteen elevations. But I mean, we're, we're eager to get started on it. I know everybody talks about the hole at the front, you know, the, the temporary sediment basin. We're ready to develop this property, get it done, get it maintained and landscaped and people living there. There was a comment on who is maintaining the open space, all this open space. Great question. All of our communities do have, just like any other community, homeowners association. We're the board of directors of that homeowners association. But we have, not only do we maintain the landscaping of the homes, but they also maintain the landscaping of the open space. Some of that open space is what I would call active open space. Like the entrance road coming up, you'd keep that mowed, looking nice. Might be a pocket park here or there. A lot of that hill on New Shackle, I, I kind of envisioned that being kind of what it is today. It's like a pasture. You've got the big oak trees growing up. Another reason to bring those off of New Shackle, you can save some of those trees there that you see. The previous plan, those would have been gone. So, you know, we, we, the, the homeowners association would be maintaining the open space. The company would be maintaining the home landscaping and the homes, and the same landscape contractor would be doing the open space, just like a typical community.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm going to echo Commissioner Slattery's comment that high density, pushing this together so it's cheaper for you to build and more revenue and stuff, I think that's the wrong direction. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Commissioner Evans?
Well, there's an advantage to being one of the more senior citizens around. I remember back when this, probably around the time this was first proposed, there was a discussion politically among the powers that be whether we should go for higher density for the sake of growth and development, or if, given the fact that Hendersonville was to develop, as everyone expected, why didn't we keep it in a more spacious area and provide room for larger houses and bigger yards for kids and families? And at the same time, maybe try some commercial development, which we haven't done a very good job at over a number of years. But bottom line is, the pendulum swings. And at that particular time, it swung toward high density and high growth, and there was a, a political upheaval at that time to do that. Today, I don't believe you would get that first development approved, much less one with this kind of density. So I'm going to have to echo what a couple of other people have already said. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hasty?
Has the Tennessee State Archaeological, Archaeologists will do a survey on Indian burial sites? Have you requested one be done?
When we get our, our Tennessee state permits for any kind of impact stream wetlands or anything like that, they do a cultural resource study, our consultants do, that they turn into the Army Corps of Engineers and TDEC as well. So that, that has been done. You know, there's, I guarantee people lived on this land before this development, just like any of our homes. I have a good bit of experience developing around archaeological sites, and it's not, not easy. It's something that you do need to be careful about, with the understanding that where there were people who lived in areas that we all have developed and lived in, in the past. We're not the first ones here. I love the artifacts that you brought. I'd love to look through them. I, I kind of get into that, honestly. So, you know, going around and, and seeing things on the ground, reminding of people who lived here and called this area home in the past, I think's a very neat thing. You know, I really do.
So your long answer is the state archaeologist hasn't been?
I don't, I don't believe the state archaeologist has been there, no, sir. But we've had a...
I know. We saw the picture of the mounds in the book that was passed around. But there are burial sites, extensive burial sites in that area. That whole part of the county, as a matter of fact, that are not mounds, and they're there. And I was involved with the development, and I can't even remember which one it was over there. And we lost a lot of real estate and actually wound up giving it to the Indian tribes, because we couldn't do anything with it.
Right.
You may have, you may find it there, but not in a mound. So I would, I would have somebody from the state archaeologist-
Yeah, we can make that request.
Check that specifically. Another thing that was mentioned was a TIS. I can't vote for some changes on something other that I would agree with to begin with, if I don't see a TIS. Maybe we needed a whole lot more than what's shown on this preliminary plan that a TIS may show. You know, site distance has been mentioned. Was a site distance done on posted speed or average speed that takes place out there? That could make a significant difference on your interest location and how your interest is designed. I think a one-way in and a one-way out for 103 units is ridiculous. I know you're planning on connectivity to other property if and when it develops. But that may be years-
That's right.
Next year, or never. So a one-way in and one-way out, I don't think is a good idea. I think what you're doing with the plan, some of the things you've done are good. But what you're doing is trying to get rid of your bad and stack the same units on a smaller area. I will not vote for a change that goes to 6,000 square foot lots. I don't think that's good, period, for Hendersonville, Nashville, Texas, or California. That's my opinion. I live on a lot that's 10,000 square foot, and I think it's awful small. So half that or close to it, you know, I couldn't do it. Now, you mentioned HOA. These people are renters, right?
Right.
What's their HOA fee?
They, they, it's, they don't pay it. We own all the homes.
I know. It's not an HOA. It's a, it's a-
But it is, but it is, we do establish a legal HOA in our communities.
It's, that's an HOA in word. It's a private ownership, and you dictate, you're a king.
Right, but it's, it's an HOA that owns and maintains the open space in a community, just like any other community. And we own all the homes, but it is a legal HOA, I can assure you. We have bylaws and meetings and-
There's not a single person that lives out there has a voice. Most HOAs is made up of residences. I mean, you're, you're, you're the boss, you're the king, you're the HOA. I wouldn't, it may be an HOA in words, or however you want to say it, but to me, that's not an HOA. Or as I said, I'm not gonna vote for anything that's decreased the lots. I think some of the things you've done are good, but it was bad on the front end. And you're trying to resolve some of those issues and stack it all in one little area. I could bid you for some of your changes, but you need to reduce your lots and count and increase your lot size on what you have. On the architectures, you show a fence between every one of them. You gonna build those?
Yeah, they, our rendering show a privacy fence. We do do a, we do it, place a black aluminum fence around every piece of property. I don't know why our rendering show a privacy fence. I wish they did not, because we do not install privacy fences. We do market and on every home, place a black, four-foot tall black aluminum fencing with gates, because people have dogs and they have kids in the backyard, and we want to encourage that.
So you don't know whether you're gonna build those fences or not, then?
We're not, what I'm saying is, we're not building privacy fences, but we are building black aluminum fencing on our homes.
All the way around?
Well, in the backyard, sides, around the back.
Okay. What's the setback from the street to the garage entrance?
What is it, Keith, 20? I mean, sorry, Grant?
I think that's correct. I don't, I don't know if I actually have that in front of me right now, but-
Whatever is currently approved.
Yeah, there's no changes to the, to that.
Are the sidewalks on the streets?
There's sidewalks on both sides of the road, yes, sir.
What's the distance to on the sidewalk in front of the garage?
That's where the 20 feet would come in.
It's the setback from the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's, setback set from the property corners and usually the right-of-way puts it right at the back of sidewalk, plus or minus. So it'd be 20 foot. And I will say, all of the homes, they have a recessed garage from the front porch of 10 to 12 feet. So the garage face, if you're, the house might be at 20 feet-
Right.
But the garage would be closer to 30.
Usually in developments where you got small like that with renters, they wind up more than two cars per residence. Where they gonna park?
Well, that's why we have two-car garage, two spaces behind it. Now, where we see a lot of problems when you have a one-car garage and a single-
I bet you talk, half the people out here got a garage. They got lawnmower and storage in it. They got a car in it. No stop them.
Might be right.
We gotta wind up with a parking issue with that small of a lot, if we don't watch it. You know, somebody mentioned Bridge Mill, maybe you did, or somebody did about parking. This will be as bad or worse, because now you're not dealing with an HOA, you're dealing with you and existing owners or renters, solidly. I, like I said, I'm, I don't see enough improvements for me to vote for reduced lot sizes. So I'm a no, but if it, that plan gets changed, I would have a couple of changes that I would like to see made to that plan. Number one being, where you got your two cul-de-sacs and the road extension. Every lot that fronts the cul-de-sac that is to be extended, where you've got your setback and you're gonna build a house back off of that cul-de-sac, what's gonna happen when the road's extended? I know the public works comments ask, how are you gonna handle the extension when it goes as far as those two cul-de-sacs are concerned? Are you gonna tear the cul-de-sac out and extend the road? You gonna make the new developer on the other side do it? How will that happen?
So typically, the new developer would tear that out and extend it. We're having to do that in a Wilson County project right now, we just finished up. The important thing is, on a cul-de-sac, you treat it like a cul-de-sac and it's gonna be permanent. So the houses are pushed back a little bit, because usually cul-de-sac lots are a little bit pie-shaped. If you don't do that and put it as if the cul-de-sac's not there, when the new curb is put in, the house is too close. It looks too close. And so to answer your two questions, one, I would, we'd wanna push those back facing those cul-de-sacs that are gonna be extended, those two at the south. But also, it's generally the second developer coming in that would, would do that. It's hard to tie a road. There would be a right-of-way required, I'm sure, Trey, Grant. It would be required down to the property line, so that the neighboring developer, if it's ever developed, could tie. You know, there's not a, we can't create a spite strip there to where they can't connect.
I know, you can't build the houses to the setback line assuming that there's no cul-de-sac there.
Right.
But if you set these houses back, then you extend the road, you got about three or four lots on each side. Looks like a drunk surveyor laid it out. So what I would recommend, and I've done this before, and it didn't pass, every lot that abuts the cul-de-sac that is to be extended is to be labeled a reserved lot until the cul-de-sac is extended. You still got your lot, but you don't need to build on it until it's extended. And that would be my recommendation to that, if this plan is approved. And I guess I'll quit.
Thank you for your comments. Not thank you for quitting, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasty.
I guess, you know, there's a whole lot about your plan-
Thank you for that.
I don't like.
No, I understand.
And, and I, I've been in the development business for 30 years. And I wouldn't approve the first plan, in my opinion. I'm through.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasty. Man, the applicant thanks you as well. I'm gonna recognize myself here for just a moment, just have a couple more follow-up questions from, from what Commissioner Hasty was asking, because it alluded back to what I asked you from the very beginning on that, the reducing the number of lot sizes. Or reducing the number of lots, excuse me. I wanted to ask though, because y'all own part of Fountain Brook that is rentals, is that correct? Okay. How was what you're proposing here tonight, how does that compare to what the product that you have there at Fountain Brook?
So they, there's some side-low garages there. Most of the 54 homes are side-low, 10 are front-load there. That's the way that, that project was approved in the back, those back final phases. That was before my time with the company. But those 54 lots there, they're, I think, 80-foot wide, so the product's about 35-foot wide, then you add on the side-low garage. So it, it makes it tight. There's a lot of topography on this site. There's a lot of topography at Fountain Brook as well. And it makes some of the side-load and turnaround areas kind of tight and constrained. So it's, you know, there's, at Fountain Brook, I believe, they're 70% brick, give or take. So there's some similarities between that on the material here as well.
Okay. But overall, is it fair to say that Fountain Brook has larger homes and you're probably charging a larger, larger homes, larger lots on that?
No, that we have a three, four, and five-bedroom home. The largest home there, we have four of the 54. They are 2,600 square feet. But the other five bedrooms, 24. Then we got a four-bedroom at 23. Please don't quote me on these, but I'm just going down. Then a three-bedroom at 1,896. So it's very similar square footage as to what we're proposing here.
Okay.
And bedroom count.
Okay. How about lot size?
Lot sizes there, they're larger. They're, I think, 80 or 75 by whatever they are deep. But they're not overly deep there, but they have very, very little, small backyards because of the, the topography.
Okay. Is what you, and I know this is a moving target, and it's not even something that really falls in our purview. Just helped kind of wrap my mind around it. How would the rent be here at Falcon Ridge? How would that compare to?
We think it would be very comparable.
Very comparable, so it's gonna be in the same price range on that, for smaller lots, though. Is that correct? Okay. I'm, kinda go back to my original point. I question why somebody would wanna pay the same rent for a smaller lot. That's me personally, just as a consumer on that. I'll go back to my point that I kind of made from the beginning, and I think Commissioner Hasty actually elaborated on quite a bit more on that. Is, there's some things that you do well on this. I think the solution, though, to get what you're wanting from these changes on this is not smaller lots, it's less lots. And for that reason, I'll be voting no on that. But I wanna recognize Commissioner Hardwick.
I have just a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
We've been here a while, so I'll make it in a hurry. Are all the homes 1,900 square feet?
No, sir.
Okay, so they're gonna float?
Yes. Yeah, they have, we have three or four floor plans. They're 1,900, and I don't know the middle one, then up to 24 or something.
So 1,900's the smallest, and it will go up from there?
That's right. Yeah, we had, we, the old, the current approved plan had a minimum for lot size, and so we wanted to increase that minimum. The old minimum was 1,200 square feet. Our new minimum is 1,900, but not every home is 1,900 square feet, no, sir.
Will all, will the homes have different designs, or do they basically look all the same?
They'll have different designs. So of those, you have three to four elevations each. If you spread those out and add color variation to it as well, then you did, the last thing we want is to ride through and go, it's the same house over and over again. Because, you know, we, we want, there's interests are aligned here. You, you want the best-looking community in your, in your municipality, and we want that, too. It helps our business. Like, if we have it looking good, that's good for business versus people who don't want to live in what we create. So they will be different.
So the square footages that you're quoting, does that include the garage?
No.
Or is that a heated square footage?
That's heated square footage, yes.
So if it's 1,900 square foot and you put a 400-square-foot garage, you're really looking at a 2,400 square feet?
And a front porch, six by, you know, 12, and then a rear patio. I mean, it, it, there's other unheated areas, but you're right. It's heated square footage is what we're quoting.
Is the 1,900?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you guys already own the land and, or do you have it under contract pending approvals?
We own it.
You own it?
Mm-hmm.
Then I have a question for staff. The plan that's already approved in 2014, does it stay approved until it gets developed? Or does it, at some point, because it never was developed, it goes back to just regular zoning?
Yeah, it, it stays approved unless, unless there's action, you know, to rezone it. Currently, they're vested with their right for the plan that they have right now. I believe where it's at right now, they already have a preliminary plat approved and the construction plans approved. And so all that stuff with the traffic and everything, all that's been approved under that old plan, as well as they had a final plat approved for it as well. But that has expired, and they're gonna have to resubmit the final plat, but their vesting is still there. So, so they have-
To my right, they will have the right to-
Yeah, yeah. That, they have the right to build that 2014 as it's, as it's approved.
And it stays with them, or until some other change happens?
That's correct.
Okay.
And right now, they're in a, they're in a position of, of vesting with the plats and everything that's, that's been going on with it. So it's, it's something that they have the, that's what they have by right.
Yeah.
And so then, when they're asking for this evening, are all the things that we were discussing to change it to, to the version that you see up there? But if, if this is denied, then they still have the right to do that. And then they can determine, you know, what they can and cannot do with that-
Right.
Within their own restraints of what they, what they want to do.
Of what was approved.
That's correct. But all they could do is, they'd have to do something that was in substantial compliance with what they have. So they could make some, some minor changes, but it would have to be in substantial compliance with what they already have. And what this does do, what I might explain as well, is if, if this new plan was, was, was approved through this process and by BOMA, then, then that does open up a fresh look of the preliminary plat. The construction plans would have to be redone, then what Trey was talking about. Then a new traffic study would have to be done to determine what, what kind of improvements would have to be done. And then those improvements would have to be done, whatever was defined in that. So that's just, and then a new final plat would have to be submitted. So but right now, with what they've got right now, just to kind of go back to it, right now, they're already approved to do the 103 lots as the plan exists. And all they have to do at this point is resubmit their final plat that just expired about last year, I think, in December or something. And, and then go through that process, and that's really it.
But you would review the final plat compared to what was the preliminary plat?
That's correct.
And if it matches, it's gonna be approved?
And the construction plans.
Right.
So that's, that's what we would do.
Two, one, one last question, and I promise that'll be the end. The, we went through a fairly substantial design changes to our standards. And if, if for whatever reason this does not get approved tonight, and they go back to the 2014, do they build to the design standards that were in place at that time? Or do they have to match the design standards that are in place today?
To the design standards of the 2014, because that's what they're vesting, or they're, they're legally attached to those things.
So we'd have to dig out the old book from 2014, and that's what they would work from?
Yes, and I, I think he was mentioning about the, the house plans. So the house plans that, we, we don't have the plans up here that staff worked with them on, that are pretty nice plans. Actually, in, in some ways nicer even than the ones that were in Fountain Brook. And so Fountain Brook, they had to, they had a similar situation where they had a planned development, and they had designs, and we made them meet, you know, the spirit and close to, you know, what was approved there. And so we've held them to the same thing here. So those sketchy-looking, black-and-white things, we worked with them over a long period of time to, to have new plans that are definitely within the spirit of that, very nice, very nice homes. And really, the big difference is, on these smaller lots, then you get the smaller, the smaller homes, which probably, from the concept of what they have with those color renderings, if you can pull it, pull one of those up, you know, probably as far as the difference, what this would be, just in comparison, probably something somewhat similar to lot size and appearance of like Millstone or parts of Durham Farm. So it would be probably similar to that, that, you know, kind of development on a little bit smaller lot with the front-load of garages.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardwick. At this time, I don't have anybody, any commissioners lit up wanting to speak, but I sure would like to entertain a motion to either approve or deny for somebody wants to make one. And if they wanted to add in some findings of fact, that would be good, too. So if there's anybody that wants to be, take a stab at that. That is, that is kind of your thing to do, Commissioner Hasty, on that, so. Yes, sir.
I, as I said, I think there are some changes they're making that make good sense and are good. Eliminating stuff on New Shackle Island Road, squeezing in off of the floodplain. You know, but those are designed issues that should have been addressed on the front end with their original development. Now, but if we turn down this, they're gonna try to take advantage of us with old design standards. Or they're not gonna live up to what we think would be our, the standards that we would want now. And which I would like to see as much improvement as I could. You know, I, and it's like I said a while ago, I mean, nothing against these guys or anything or what they're doing, but I think what they're doing, they're trying to solve some of their original mistakes and squeeze it all in and reduce the lots to get it on. If they were less lots and go back to the lot size, maybe like they had with a plan similar to this, you know, I would probably go along with it. But I mean, I, I just, a 6,000-square-foot lot, you know, with a 1,900-square-foot, 400-square-foot garage, patio, and all this, that and the other, those folks are not gonna have a yard. You know, the only amenities they're gonna have are some of the outside areas. Some of that is good, not all good, squeezing it all in, you know, and I, I, I hate to make motions to deny, because it gets you in trouble if it don't pass. And I, I, I hate to make motions to deny, cause it gets you in trouble if it don't pass. So I'm not gonna make a motion to approve. And I don't wanna make a motion to deny, cause I don't really know really how things are gonna go. And then we got a problem on our hands, we got a motion to deny, it don't pass.
That's fair.
So.
That's fair.
I'm thus, I'm gonna.
You're gonna defer on making that?
I'm gonna defer on a motion on this one for.
Okay.
Well, I will.
You may wind up with a situation where there is no motion.
That's, we don't need to have that. We do need to take action on that. So I've, I've obviously stated my opinion on this and I think you can respect where I'm coming from. But with that, just so we can get the ball rolling and take action on this, I'm going to make a motion to approve with all staff comments and open it up to a vote then on that. And so can we move to a roll call vote?
Maybe adding one.
Uh, uh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, I got a little ahead of myself on that. So, yes.
Oh, second to your mission.
Thank you.
Maybe one thing to add.
Yes.
With conference, I mean, with confirmation from the developer is, are they voluntarily offering that thousand?
Okay.
Thousand dollars per.
I'm, I'm gonna restate that just so that everything's completely clear. I'm gonna make a motion to approve with all staff comments with condition on the thousand dollars per home that for improvements over there at the rugby park on it. That is voluntary.
That's voluntary, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, so that is the motion. We have a second, forgive me, who seconded that? Commissioner Altus, or did you do that? So we have a motion and a second. Now we're gonna move to a roll call vote on that. And this is a motion to approve, just to be clear on that, so. All right, I believe we've have everybody. Believe everybody has voted, so. She has, right there.
Okay.
Yes. Um, so we've got everybody voted and locked in. And so Caitlin, will you call the roll, please? Or not call the roll? Would you please read the result? Wow. I was up early this morning, you'll have to forgive me.
The motion fails with one yes, zero abstentions, and eight noes.
Thank you. And I'm gonna let Director Free just kind of explain to everybody, cause what the next step, kinda in the process here is on this, as with the, the, with the failed motion to make the recommended, that, for BOMA to approve on this.
Uh, so what, the way it's moving forward with this vote, uh, this is moving from the Planning Commission with a negative recommendation, uh, to go to BOMA, our Board of Mayor and Alderman, our elected officials. And so next week, uh, this'll go to, uh, the Bo, the, the BOMA General Committee. And it's kind of a small, small committee that kinda pass through. Uh, it's very important though, but, but it pass, it passes through to go to the full committee. And then two weeks after that, uh, it'll go to, uh, the, uh, Board of Mayor and Alderman. And, uh, and then they'll have a public hearing, just like we had tonight, where you could sign up. You'll have the ability to sign up and speak, speak again. All the information from this meeting will be forwarded to BOMA. Uh, and then, and then that evening, uh, after the public hearing on their agenda, uh, they'll, uh, they'll make a final decision on whether to approve or deny, uh, the application. And then that'll be the end of the resolution, uh, to the, to the request. So that's the process. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Director Free. Appreciate the explanation that. Before we move on, next item on the agenda, I just wanted to actually just take a moment and just kinda say thank you to everybody who came out tonight on that. You don't have to leave after this, but I think most of you probably will on this. But I also wanted to mention too, it's just, yeah, I also wanna mention, just thank y'all for being respectful too. I know there's a lot of passion that goes along with this, and that's very much appreciated though, so. Good, thanks.
Thank you, guys. Thank y'all for coming.
We do have a few other. Folks, we do have a few more agenda items tonight, so I wanna go on and get it started so we can get everybody else through too. Lee, I've lost control. I know, I said it did. Thank you. Now, we will move on with the rest of our agenda now. Um, next item up on the agenda is item eight, staff-level projects that have been approved. And I'll turn this over to Director Free so he can elaborate on these a little bit, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just run through these fairly quickly. These are items that have been approved by staff. Hendersonville High School dugout improvements. This is a significant improvement, uh, within the park, uh, for Hendersonville High School. Uh, it's gonna be a nice, uh, nice addition out there and it should be a very attractive, uh, uh, building as well. And, uh, then we have Saundersville Industrial Park Lot Resub- Subdivide on Jessica Lauren Court. Uh, and then the state, uh, New State Farm at three sixty-one West Main Street, exterior color change that we've approved. Uh, also, Mr. Chairman, staff, uh, staff is working on projects that are pending on Avondale, uh, fourteen, ten forty-one Avondale Parking Lot, uh, the Alexander Commercial Final Plat, and that's a, across the street, uh, here from City Hall on, uh, Main Street. And then also break, Broken Paddle Outfitters, uh, Outfitters, uh, Outbuilding, uh, still continue to work with them. Uh, we've got the Music City Studios, Molly Walton. Uh, that's, uh, following up on the approval of, uh, the site plan, uh, that the Planning Commission approved. And this is just cleaning up that, uh, Combined Development Plan Amendment, uh, to correct that. And then we have, uh, Small Cell, uh, Facilities, uh, on Indian Lake and Anderson Lane. And those are all the items that are pending and the ones that are approved. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a question real quick.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Has there been any, any movement on the Twitty Center, Twitty City Center project?
Uh, I did, I did talk to them, um, um, about a month ago and, uh, and they reaffirmed, uh, that they're still interested in doing the project and they're still intent to do it. Uh, they've had several other projects, uh, in the, uh, located at different parts of the country that they were wrapping up. Uh, but, uh, they're tell, they're telling me that, uh, they're gonna get focused back on, on that project. And I, I believe today, uh, they did make the improvements to, uh, which is totally separate, but it's near there, uh, that, uh, the Holiday Inn that was damaged by the tornado, I think they had a ribbon cutting for reopening today on that, so.
How about the mansion?
Uh, that, that is a part of the deal with the planned development, uh, that, uh, if they, as they, if and when they move forward with the, with the, with the, uh, the planned development, uh, then that is tied to that, that they would have to, uh, renovate the and maintain the, uh, the mansion, the Twitty mansion.
The question that I'm getting is, the mansion roof was supposedly lifted up in the tornado and set back down.
Yeah.
Which means that building could be taking in water. We can tell the community that. That building is not taking in water?
I'm, I'm not aware that it is. Uh, I'll get back to you on it. I'll reach out, uh, me or a staff member will reach out to them and, uh, check with them. Uh, I, I haven't heard that. Uh, but let me just check out to confirm that that's the, that's the case.
Okay.
Uh, so, but as far as I know, nothing has changed with their intentions to renovate the building and maintain it, uh, as they, as they had presented. And I'll find out and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
We have a comment from the peanut gallery from Alder.
I can't officially, but I'll say that with a second, but it's, yes.
Yes. I don't know if that made it on video or not, so we'll just kinda. Yes. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Um, here none. Mr. Director, will you give us any final thoughts and comments before we take your motion to adjourn?
Yes, I have, and I will keep them very brief, but I do have very exciting news that, uh, Caitlin Shin, uh, here over this last month, uh, has been promoted to our open planner position. And so we congratulate her. Uh, and so, uh, we did do a national search for that and, uh, and, uh, she came out really well. And I think it speaks, speaks a lot of our staff. And it speaks a lot of, uh, you know, the, the city of Hendersonville is a good place, is a good place to live, but it's a good place to work. And city government is a very good place, place to work. And, um, uh, it, you know, it, it says a lot when we can promote within. And, uh, and so I'm really appreciative that Caitlin took this position and I'm very excited, uh, for, uh, for her and, uh, in this new, new role. Uh, and of course, the, as, as, when you promote from within, uh, you do create the need to backfill the position. And so we're currently in the process of seeking an assistant planner, uh, to fill Caitlin's current position. Currently, she's doing, uh, multiple roles, as you can see. Uh, she'll be transitioning some of that once we, uh, we find someone for, for that particular position. And, uh, I wanted to, wanted to share that. And I also just wanted to, to say, you know, uh, this, this last, last month, uh, it's been, it's been eight years since, uh, me and my family have moved to Hendersonville. And, uh, I just wanted to express, you know, uh, uh, what a great place this is to live, what a great place, again, it is to work. And, uh, I just appreciate the opportunities, uh, that I have to work with the professionals, uh, here in this, uh, in this building and in, in the city. And I, I certainly, and really respect and appreciate the relationship and, uh, the, uh, that I've had with the Planning Commission. And, uh, and, uh, I'm very proud of the current Planning Commission and, uh, the, the way that you all look at things and, uh, from many different angles. There's a lot of different people up here, looking at a lot of different things. Uh, but at the heart of all of that is you care for our community and you express that in your service, as serving in this, uh, very challenging position as, uh, planning commissioners. Uh, but I know I appreciate it and I know the planning staff appreciates it as well. So thank you very much for, for your service.
Thank you, Director Free. And happy anniversary. We've been very, very pleased to have you here the past eight years and hopefully it'll